Councilwoman Mosley. Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Present.
Councilwoman Easter.
Present.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Present.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Present.
We have five present.
Item four, presentation of the minutes from the previous meeting held on Thursday, June 9th, 2016, and the specialty held on Monday, June 13th, 2016, Wednesday, June 15th, 2016, and Monday, June 20th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve item four?
So may I?
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilwoman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Item five is approval of the proposed agenda. Is there a motion to approve item five?
I make the motion with one pressure. We want to agree on item sixteen. Sixteen.
Okay.
And the other thing is, we're still waiting on the attorney approval. Well, not approved, but reviewed.
Okay. You made a motion?
I did.
There's a motion to approve the agenda, item five. Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Item six, reports of the Public Works Committee, Councilwoman Robert Eastern, Attorney.
Second, Mayor. Six A's, a presentation of an ordinance for renaming Fifty Berry Street from State Street to Ohio to world famous Sigma Boulevard in the city of Houston River. Six Bs, a presentation of the ordinance approving jurisdictional transfer of certain more than seven streets to St. Clair County. Six Cs, a presentation of a resolution from the American City Council to award contract rights for us to ask for streets proven in various locations. I'd like to move to approve items A, B, and C.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Eastern, seconded by Councilwoman Ding. Do we have any question? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes. Number seven A. Do we have anything further coming from the public works?
No, ma'am.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding, reports for the finance committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven A, a presentation of an ordinance for the mayor and city council to approve the 2016 general fund line item transfer, number sixteen zero seven, zero seven eight zero three. I like the motion to approve item seven A.
So move.
Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
We had a motion, but it's second.
It was moved by Councilwoman Ding, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Okay.
Councilwoman Mosley. Councilwoman Mosley. Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have four eyes and one neck.
Motion passes.
Item seven B, presentation of an ordinance for the mayor and city council to approve the emergency purchase of a telecommunications generator. I'd like to move to approve. I'd like to make the motion to approve item seven B.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ding, seconded by Councilwoman, I mean, Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any question? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes.
Item seven C, presentation of an ordinance for the mayor and city council to approve the 2016 general fund budget amendment number one. I'd like to move to, I'd like to make the motion to approve item seven C.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Ding, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any question? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley. Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
No.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have three eyes and two necks.
Motion passed.
Item seven D, presentation of an ordinance for the mayor and city council to approve the 2016 TIP budget amendment number one. I'd like to make the motion to approve item seven D.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Ding, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any questions for item seven D? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley. Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes. Do we have anything further from the finance committee? Councilwoman?
Thank you.
I would like to change my vote for the TIP page to yes. Mrs. Ossman. I can change my vote for the red to yes in the TIP page. I got a red step.
Is that for seven D, Councilwoman?
No, that's seven A.
Seven A.
Yeah, seven A. I vote yes.
Okay. Or seven A?
Seven.
It's a TIP.
No, it's a general fund.
It has a general fund, a TIP.
Yes. The TIP is supposed to be seven D. Can you vote on that one?
I say I'm going to change my vote.
You voted yes.
You voted yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Reports of the Public Safety Committee, Councilwoman Latoya Dean.
Thank you. Item eight A, presentation of regulatory affairs business license applications. They are at Black Ross Licker, thirteen forty-seven State Street, Mary's Café, twenty-three oh three State Street. And I would like to make a motion to approve item eight A.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilwoman Mosley, to approve item eight A. Do we have any question?
I have a question. City manager, um, do we have an answer for the business? What's your name? Your business?
I can't remember.
Spend them. What's the name of the business?
Metal Tasha.
Metal, from when it was presented, um, I believe in June.
Do you know what you're writing this was, Councilwoman?
I don't.
I would hear it was. When I was standing, I read this, I'm sorry, I've never done it.
Okay. So let us look into it some more, and then the city manager or chief last one will be in contact. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes.
Item eight B, presentation of an ordinance for the mayor and city council authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract lane calling for demolition of five structures. They are eight fifteen North Seventy-Fifth Street, eight sixteen North Seventy-Fifth Street, twenty-nine oh eight Ohio Avenue, twenty-nine twenty Ohio Avenue, and seven sixteen North Twenty-first Street. I would like to make a motion to approve item eight B.
Councilwoman, before you continue, uh, if I may.
It was moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilwoman Mosley, and the other question.
So, um, I went out and investigated a few of these properties. Two of these, two of these properties are currently owned by St. Clair County. They have auction signs up in front of them, um, so they probably should be removed from the list. And me and the regulatory area director also went to one of these structures and it's actually habitable, so it's my recommendation it be taken off the list. So to recap, um, it is my opinion that eight fifteen North Seventy-Fifth Street is habitable and should be taken off the list. Twenty-nine, well, eight sixteen North Seventy-Fifth Street is, um, owned by St. Clair County and is scheduled to be auctioned off already currently. And twenty-nine oh eight Ohio Avenue is owned by St. Clair County and scheduled to be auctioned off. So it's my recommendation that those three be removed from this particular piece of legislation. I've also conferred, uh, the TIP department and they agree with my assessment.
Okay.
I'm going to draw my own second.
I'll draw my motion.
Okay, so we're going to amend item eight B. To remove the three properties listed. City manager, can you announce the three, please?
Yes, um, eight fifteen North Seventy-Fifth Street, eight sixteen North Seventy-Fifth Street, twenty-nine oh eight Ohio Avenue, which it will leave twenty-nine twenty Ohio Avenue to be demolished, and seven sixteen North Twenty-first Street to be demolished.
So I would like to make a motion to approve item eight B, if those are corrections.
Second. It's been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any further questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes.
Item eight C, presentation of ordinance for any special use permit for fifteen oh one Martin Luther King Drive. I would like to make a motion to approve item eight C.
Second.
Item eight C, been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern to approve item eight C. Do we have any question? Um, I do have one. I know there were some unratings on the location. Do we do any further research, city manager?
I think the other end stands as it is as far as the, um, from the, the analysis to the community mission, I think the location given a spot, they asked the other end about the spot on the third map that's the same rate as I have.
Councilwoman, I think that's the chart is that they be using the front entrance. Everything will be conducted on the back of the facility. They won't be using it. As a matter of fact, they said that they would unify the front part of it, the part that is facing the non-signing area, village area, and they would only be using the back entrance. And there's, uh, letters from all of those residents approving that happen.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes. Do we have any further legislation from Public Safety?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Item nine, reports of the Community Development Committee, Councilwoman Roy Mosley Senior. And it looks like we don't have anything.
We don't even have something.
Okay.
I have copies for council. Um, it's a piece of legislation that we were, um, I was going to bring before council last month, but it didn't need it, um, for various reasons. Um, it is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Eastside Roofing to install a roof of Billy's Pastry under the business retention program out of the TIP department, um, and it's also an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contractual agreement with Roberto Taylor to install ceiling tiles for Billy's Pastry's under their business retention program. Wanted to do some more development, we got that done. This has been through a guy at the TIP department.
So we have, um, items nine A, an ordinance, items nine A, blue, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Eastside Roofing to install a roof of Billy's Pastry's under the business retention program. And then we will have items nine B, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a con, into a contractual agreement with Robert, uh, Taylor to install ceiling tiles for Billy's Pastry's under the business retention program. Is there a motion to add items nine A and nine B? I make a motion. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Mosley, seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Do we have any questions about adding items nine and nine B to the table? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes. Item nine A, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Eastside Roofing to install a roof of Billy's Pastry's under the business retention program. Is there a motion to approve item nine A?
I make a motion, second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Mosley, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any question? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes. Item nine B, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Robert Taylor to install ceiling tiles for Billy's Pastry's under the business retention program. Is there a motion to approve item nine B? I make a motion.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Mosley, seconded by Councilwoman Eastern. Do we have any question? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding.
Yes.
Councilwoman Easter.
Yes.
Councilwoman Greenwood.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson-Hitt.
Yes.
We have five hours.
Motion passes. Do we have any further items coming from Community Service, Community Development Committee? We don't. Moving right along to item ten. Do we have any old business? Item eleven, any new business? Item twelve, city manager comments? Do we have any city manager comments?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay. Item thirteen, city council comments? Starting with Councilwoman Mosley.
I was in town and I heard of a shooting on a day where a gentleman was chief of town. Come around the corner.
Yes, chief, is the chief here? Okay. Yes, thank you. There was a shooting on a day. Chief can give us the details that he can give us. Chief, can you, can you give a, a brief update on the, the shooting that happened on Sixteenth and Gate?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we had a call, shots fired. Uh, male subject wasn't clothed, firing shots on his porch. He had a shotgun and handgun. Uh, cars drove by, he pointed the weapon at the vehicles that drove by, fired off a few shots. Our officer along the Washington Park also responded, and when they responded, he pointed the weapon at them as well, fired the weapon at them. They returned and fired and, uh, struck him and he, uh, just not even deceased. That was pretty much. And also, it was another, we had a witness that was unseen, arrested in the area. Uh, she gave a statement, had even pointed the weapon in her direction, arrested, fired a shot as well. Uh, and with the one officer that was there, I've talked to him today, um, the officer that was involved in that, and I did know that until today, we had an incident last week where our subject, what ran into his vehicle with a handgun, and luckily the subject held the handgun out. He didn't have to shoot the subject, but that subject could have actually took his life last week, so we're just concerned about, you know, a lot of times, just the situation that has to be, I don't know if that would be.
Councilwoman Mosley.
Yes, ma'am, uh, he said that it was pointed at the, at the, uh, the suspect was pointed at the police, he didn't fire the gun, I didn't understand, fired the gun at the police. Did you hear that, ma'am?
I did. Did you say he fired? He did. He did say he fired in the direction of the police officer.
He did say that?
Yes, sir.
I thought he said that, uh, he fired at, at somebody's residence.
He said that as well.
Okay. Then I have no problem with that. If I shot the police, I can understand that. There's so much going on, man. We're just shooting our folks for weapons, and, and they have no, no time to shoot them in the leg or in the arm, like a shooter in the stomach and in the chest. I don't understand that. Uh, we have to kill them. When we shoot, you can't leave them? That's missing there. But maybe if you leave them down there, they'll come, I can hit you, I guess, so I just don't know what's going on with that. I just hate to see people die and go just like that. I heard he was naked and things of that nature, but it just, I just feel bad to see. I don't want to see a life go like that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mosley. Councilwoman, okay. Councilwoman Greenwood, do you have any? Councilwoman Eastern?
No, ma'am.
Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to citizens' comments. Ms. Valerie Winslow. Okay. Ms., Mr. Odell Winslow. Ms. Thelma Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My concern is that of the tax increment financing or TIP and related ordinances. I suggest that in the passage of any ordinance relative to TIP, there should be a discussion inclusive of the citizens of Eastside North. The intent of this discussion is meant to initiate civil discourse around the policies that affect the Eastside Northwest region and/or area, as it were, to hear each other's perspective. As is the case with all public policies, the issue is complex and multifaceted with many stakeholders. Any new ordinance or changes in existence, say, law relative to the issuance of lucrative tax increment financing should be discussed with citizens before such deal is passed into law or audience, as it were, to be sure that the case is heard from the citizens with any ordinance. Discussion of the relevant ordinance and its elements after passage is of little or no value to the citizens. The tax increment financing has not always existed in the state of Illinois. It is a creation of a state legislative rather than a fundamental legal doctrine. In nineteen seventy-seven, the Illinois General Assembly passed the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, and TIP was born. The general purpose of TIP is to promote the redevelopment of real estate that is not being put to its best use as a result of deterioration of improvements, dilapidation, excessive vacancies, and other factors causing development of the area to be economically unrivaled. The theory of TIP is that these adverse conditions exist because redevelopment is economically unfeasible under ordinary circumstances. In order to entice redevelopment of these rundown, misused, or otherwise unperforming areas, a supplemental source of financing is necessary to overcome the obstacles of development. TIP provides this supplement making otherwise unfeasible developments into economically viable projects. When a TIP district is created, there are, at least there should be, public hearings, planning sessions, and other opportunities for citizens and community organizations to voice their support, concern, and/or objections. During the creation of a TIP district, the community is intimately involved. After the TIP district has been established, there is no such process for inclusion and input, according to my findings. As there are no concrete guidelines or additional hearings or community approval after the TIP has been approved and before the revenue is earmarked for expenditure, projects that were the basis of the creation of TIP are supported and approved by the community or either put at the end of the expenditure list or ignored altogether. While TIPS are a good development tool for those communities that have failed to attract development, a closer look must be taken as to why that development has not occurred in those areas. Measures should be taken to ensure that TIP effectiveness as a development tool is not weakening through manipulation when there are no demonstrative goals or plans for those goals to be met and managed. Finally, I, Thelma Williams, suggest that there must be frequent reporting to the affected citizens and taxpayers to provide greater transparency in how tax dollars are being inspected. I reiterate, presenting an ordinance to the citizens prior to passage is beneficial to all parties in that it allows for input that might not otherwise have been considered. I thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, um, Ms. Williams. Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to address any of the concerns that Ms. Ms. Williams has, has brought?
Well, there's just a few, a few things there, and I don't want to have this devolve into a lecture on TIP, but there are a few things that she stated that are of concern. There is a registered parties, uh, interested parties registry that we are required to maintain by statute for registered parties, uh, that registry is in the clerk's office. And any citizen, organization, news media outlet can sign up to be a part of that and can, uh, receive notifications and updates, uh, from the TIP department. And those, the things that are, the types of reports and things of that nature that are required are listed in the statute. Secondly, uh, not only does council consider, uh, TIP projects and ordinances through their committee and, uh, and meeting process, but also there is a joint review board that is convened at least once per year, and that review board consists of all of the taxing bodies and some members of the community at large who have been appointed. who have been appointed that, uh, allows the taxing bodies to review, uh, both the finances of the TIP, uh, districts themselves and the financial plans and upcoming projects in the TIP district, and allows the taxing bodies to comment on those, uh, projects as well. So there are methods by which the public is made aware of what's going on, uh, in the TIP process. I would point out, uh, for the residents', uh, education that when the, when the TIP districts were created in nineteen eighty-six, the city had seven TIP districts, and the entire geography of the city was actually placed into one of the seven TIP districts. The city has either allowed five of those TIP districts to either expire naturally by statutory construction or has taken effective steps to dissolve them. So the majority, uh, of the real estate in the city has been taken out of the TIP districts. And the only two remaining TIP districts are TIP one, which encompasses the Council Avenue, uh, Casino Queen, uh, areas, and then some of the commercial areas south of State Street, and TIP, uh, three A, which is, uh, the Parsons Place area and, uh, the area north of, uh, Interstate, or State Street and Interstate sixty-four. So, um, I do believe that, I understand her concerns. I think that TIP is a very misunderstood tool. That is, and, and it had been abused in its infancy in the state throughout the state. Uh, but the city has been very judicious in its use of TIP and has taken steps within the last ten years to control TIP's effect on the tax rate and, and the effect on the residents, uh, of the city, so.
Okay, thank you, Attorney, for that. Uh, Ms. Burnell Ellis? Mr. Burnell Ellis, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I, I wanna know when will be, like, they, they, what will be, you wanna know when it will be, they will, they will.
City Manager, can you address Mr. Ellis?
Sure, I, I've already directed my assistant to meet with you after the meeting, so except we, we personally, so we can figure out what's going on.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll get our, we'll get our agenda. We'll get our agenda for next one.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis, and story for Joshua.
Good day, Mayor and Council. Can we be, um, uh, to the attorney, maybe he can, um, explain, since he talked about TIP. Maybe he can explain to the citizen the collection rate that the city received from, uh, from giving TIP out to the different businesses. That's the first thing. The second thing is, uh, presentation of an ordinance granting a special use permit. As a resident, uh, pretty much a lifelong resident of Eastside North, you know, I, I, I still take offense that a halfway house is gonna be put in this location. With all the liquor establishments that you all allow throughout this city, this whole city could be deemed a, um, halfway house. Because we have very few businesses here. And, uh, to add, uh, uh, people from out of town, strangers to come into this city as a halfway house, I still object to that. And thirdly, the, uh, um, the murder of the seventeen-year-old. Every time there's a murder in this city, I, I take it personally because it could be my son, I have two. But I really never hear you all discuss how or what you all gonna do to try to lower the murder rate. I do understand that under your mayorship, um, Mayor, that the murder rate is down. I keep count, I think I've lost count. I'm gonna have to do a FOIA request to your chief to get the numbers because, as I understand it, it's ten, but I think it may be between twelve. So if it's twelve, we still averaging two a month. And that's ridiculous for a city. We need more police protection, we need more police out here on the streets because with no police on the street, they, they come from St. Louis and everywhere and commit murder here because they know that this is a lawless city and they know that the lack of police protection, that they can get away with murder. So, uh, those are my three comments, but, uh, the thing that I would like for the attorney to explain, the collection rate that the city has been able to do with TIP.
Thank you, Ms. Joshua, Attorney.
I, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know what she's referring to, so I don't have much time.
I do know some of the businesses that got TIP money, they didn't fulfill their obligations. And in that manner, they should return the money or should be, uh, you should be able. Right.
So, so I think what she's referring to is some of the business retention loans that the city makes. Those loans are made in the form, most of the time in the form of forgive, what we call forgivable loans. The businesses take the money and what they do is they improve something in their business which is TIP eligible. So it might be repaving of the parking lot or upgrading the HVAC system or the roofing or something of that nature. Um, as part of those agreements, the businesses have to stay in business for a certain period of time. And over time, parts of that loan become forgiven until it becomes a grant. The city roots, uh, records a lien when those loans are given, and that lien is placed against the property until it's forgiven. So, um, in an instance where a business may not stay in business for the full period of time, the city has a lien against the property, it has a right to propose on that lien and collect any money from the sale of the property or collect the property itself. So, um, I hope that answers her question.
Thank you, Attorney. Um, do we have any further citizens' comments? Winslow?
I had a, I had a two more question to ask you. Uh, the first question I wanna ask, uh, what's community service, uh, they have prepared off of, uh, I would like to follow up to services like the city needs much attention for, it's too much and a bunch of things. And, uh, I actually, uh, I'll take the gateway to pay the rest, you know? And they go around rest and doubt and be sitting whatever, but as I was around, it's like, I don't seem like a, a good opportunity for like, follow up to programs that the city, and I actually want to do that.
Okay, all right, we can definitely talk about it.
Oh, I'm, I'm Timothy Long, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and also, uh, I guess I would have to give the city, City, uh, Manager about that. I have an office truck, it was once in my grandfather, uh, yard. I bought a property a couple of years back, I moved it over there. And I just wanna see what I have to go about doing, uh, getting that approved for her. Cause I do wanna start a business in the future for the city, so I should see what I have to do about.
We can maybe talk about it, play any particular regulatory affairs director.
Okay. Okay.
And, and Ms. Long would be happy to have you as a part of our, uh, volunteer cleanup team. And if you have other community services that you could be a part of, we would love to have you on and we can talk about that.
Are we not getting anybody else?
Yes.
I'll teach you long, I would like to watch.
Thank you. I do want to.
I have a question with the cleanup service. Isn't it only on Saturday because I seen one down after what, seventy yesterday? Do you have it through the week?
Yes, this is going on during the week, Monday through Friday. And if, and if you wanna be a part of this, I, just let me get your name and your information. Um, we started with the Welcome Sign area. Um, we're almost completed with that now. We have a few things that we're tying in up. Uh, Ms. Eric, would you like to give the citizens an update on that so they'll know where we are? And we're about to start our new project.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We have about three items left to, uh, hide the, um, Nathan St. Clair at the Welcome, Eastside North sign. One is landscaping sidewalk. We're gonna lay over sidewalk hopefully within this week. And then the other one is electrical, where we have a contractor who's gonna donate his labor hours and he's going to, we have to pay for the electrical equipment. Hopefully that is finished this week. We had Ameren Illinois to come out and put, uh, electrical pole there, which is someone had vandalized the sign and the electricity there, then it no longer exists, so we have to recreate that. And then the, uh, last thing I know that we have to do is, um, uh, we, we do a campaign for signs, so we can, we have funds to, uh, to complete that, so we just need to pick the design on that. So it's about three items, and, and after that, we're gonna move further down in Collinsville Avenue. Our plan is to start Collinsville Avenue cleaning that up, uh, really, really, it's bad.
So did everyone hear that? We're gonna be moving around from the Welcome Sign area to Collinsville Avenue. Uh, there is also a plan to sustain what we've, what we've worked on, which is our first project, which is the Welcome Sign area. We're super excited about, um, Restoration of Hope. Um, Restoration of Hope is an initiative that's designed to, to get our city clean, but more than that, to create, uh, a sense of community again, uh, and also to empower our citizens by, um, working together, you know? So we're, we've, we've been really excited with the participation that we've had. It's been wonderful. Um, we've had numerous donations from different corporate entities, different corporate citizens. That has been awesome as well. The sign, again, was donated, uh, the portico potties were donated. The, uh, equipment that we work with was donated. Food was donated, water and, and gas was donated. That, um, even all the way down to the services, some of the services that are being provided by Ameren were also donated. So we're, we're just excited. And not only are we excited, but there are people outside of our community and, and within our community that are watching, and they're excited about the work that's going on here. So, um, so we want, we definitely wanna encourage each and every one of you to get involved. Uh, we have, we keep announcements on Facebook about the next steps, so, you know, make sure you, you watch that, and we have some videos on YouTube as well. Uh, also, I want to encourage everyone to come out on Monday, this Monday, July eighteenth. Again, this Monday, July eighteenth at six thirty P.M., uh, we'll be having a town hall meeting at, uh, Good Shepherd of Faith UCC Church. That is fifteen fourteen Kansas Avenue, fifteen fourteen Kansas Avenue. And if you didn't get one of these, this is a flyer, uh, please come out. This is the opportunity and the forum for citizens to discuss things that are on their mind, to get some things off their chest. It also provides an opportunity for us to be even more transparent about what we see and the things that we see that need to happen in this community. So please come out, we encourage you to get involved, and also invite a neighbor, also invite a neighbor. So we're looking forward to, to seeing each and every one of you. City Manager, do you wanna add anything?
Looking forward to seeing you all there.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I move, second.